This time I'd like to call to or the April 11th, 2007 zoning commission meeting. Let the record show that Mr. Mike Bardwell and Mr. Scott Courtwright are absent. This time we'll go ahead and open up the public comment period. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on any item that is not up for public hearing, please come in, sign in with the secretary and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Item four, acceptance of the minutes of the February 14th, 2007 meeting. And I see we have, uh, one revision.
Um, also on that same revision, it shows that Mike Bardwell was absent, but he actually seconded the vote.
Okay.
The motion, so he was here.
Okay. Then, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve with the revised.
The revised.
Two revisions, yes.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the revised minutes by Steve Barrow.
Second.
Second by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item five, public hearing to consider the following rezoning cases. Zoning review ID 1695.07. Tracks AA, B-1-A-3, B-1-A-2, B-1-A-1, 5A, B-2, B-3-A, and a portion of B-1-A-5 for Mr. Steven Guidry.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm, uh, Steve Guidry. And, uh, I, um, I'm in the rental property business and use this, uh, use this property as, uh, my, um, sole base of operations for a mobile home park that I own. Uh, my wife and I have owned and operated Lynch's Mobile Home Park for about five years now. And our basic business is to provide a, um, safe, um, nice place to live for folks who don't have a lot of money. And, um, we've been, over the course of five years, investing in our, uh, our park and it's, we've made a lot of progress. Over that period of time, we've also acquired property adjacent to it to allow us to expand and grow our, our business. As, um, as we've added property, we've gotten to the point where the original mobile home park is pretty well limited in terms of space for expansion or other use. And, uh, our request is to basically extend the commercial zone along the airline highway to include our property. We don't have a, uh, grand plan in mind for what we intend to do. We, in order for us to continue to invest, we need to get a return on that investment. So we do need to expand a bit. Uh, the only other, uh, business ideas we've had are things that would serve our tenants like daycare or, uh, storage or washerteria. Nothing more exotic than that. So my request is to, uh, to ask you to agree to allow me to, uh, part, agree to propose to the commission to rezone this property from its current residential use to a, um, mixed commercial use.
Comments, questions from commissioners?
Just a quick question, a clarification. There's a, um, lot B4A4. It's a little half acre lot. Um, it's on Williams Burns on the west side of your property, on the south side of your property, excuse me. Um, it, it says on one map that it's 96% owned by you. Is, is that included or not included?
It is not included. Um, I own, as, as the document indicates, 96% of that property. There is a, a minority interest, a 4% interest that, uh, I've just not taken the time to buy out yet. If, uh, obviously my preference would be to include it as part of the rezoning, uh, but I was unsure if I was able to do that, not being the, the, uh, 100% owner of the property. But it is a contiguous piece of the, of the mobile home park.
What about track A2? It's had, that's not owned by you. Uh, 68 by 120 piece. Uh, a little further?
A2 is, uh, is owned by a third party. It's, uh, fully included in the 600-foot, um, commercial zone along the airline highway. And, uh, the only access to it is by using the roads within my mobile home park. Uh, it was purchased, sold by the previous owner to a, a resident of the mobile home park, uh, back many years ago. And, uh, uh, the folks who currently own it, uh, reside in peaceful coexistence with our, uh, mobile home park. I mean, they bought it, it was inside a mobile home park, it's been part of the mobile home park, uh, for the entire time.
Other comments or questions from commissioners? And then it's time we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary and you will get your three minutes to speak.
Secretary of Ben.
Yes.
Uh, you stated lot number B4A4 being owned by whom?
Um, well, according to my map, it shows that the applicant owns 96% of it.
Do you have a map present?
This will be. And then second parcel, I asked you, this one's owned by a third party, that's the party owns 96% of it.
This is, uh, what?
It's up here. And that is, uh, William Burns.
You doing that on the map, man?
No, that's it.
I'm afraid there's a larger map attached to that, you know, package.
Yeah. This is one you own? To the back?
Uh. Irvin Burns.
Irvin Burns, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Chris LaCombe, I live in Cypress Lake subdivision. I have a few pictures, uh, that I was gonna bring up here in a second. Uh, but I, I asked tonight that y'all vote against this rezoning. This is a residential area. There's a couple of businesses that are pretty much in that 600-foot zone that have been there for years, that when, uh, most of us bought there, we knew it was there. Um, this trailer park has been there for a long time. It's pretty much hidden right now. There's not a whole lot of trailers in there. Um, but we definitely are concerned, the neighborhood, uh, we've been talking about it and, and I haven't found anybody yet that would, that was happy about this. But, uh, we asked that, the, the road, of course, there's no shoulder, it's really not wide enough. The traffic, like every road around now, is, is pretty much horrible. Uh, this shows you, this is the, the, the front of the property and as you see, as y'all probably know, there is no shoulder whatsoever, open ditches. Uh, if this turns commercial, there's, there's no way to hold anyone accountable to what it's gonna be. So it could be a car lot, a barroom, or whatever. So, um, this just gives you an idea of the trailer park that's there now. Um, not, you can't, can't read the street signs, so, but this is the type of, uh, thing that's been going on there now. Um, there's another street, not real sure what that is. Uh, I don't know if this, if anybody lives here, but this is one of the trailers that's there. Uh, it probably needs to be condemned. Um, but that's just to give you an idea of, of what's there already. So, uh, we very much ask you that you, you vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Danielle Bennett. I am also a resident of Cypress Lake. I do agree with everything that Mr. LaCombe said. I moved here about five years ago to Ascension Parish to raise a family, uh, moved into a residential neighborhood. It was, um, a couple of commercial areas right there because it's so close to airline highway, but I'm not interested in having or acquiring any more commercial area or anything around in that area. In the five years that I've been there, the trailer park that we're talking about has not made any significant improvements. It actually doesn't look any different from the first day that we moved there. It's kind of an eyesore when you do pass it. I don't see where it would make our property value any better. I don't see where it would really benefit or improve anyone in our general area as far as the grand scheme of things. Commercial zoning, once it's commercial, it's gonna be commercial forever. So unless it's rezoned again, which I don't think it would be, I don't see where, if he decides to sell, it would be anything of value to our residential subdivision that we're in now. So I do ask that you vote against it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if there's no one else to speak. Comments, questions from commissioners?
I, I just had a few, um, comments. We have an ordinance for, um, mobile home parks and just driving through there today, I noticed some, um, items that are not being followed. One is, and two, we're on the screen a minute ago, that mobile homes shall be required to have, um, on all sides at the base of the unit, a skirting or rigid type material. You have mobile homes in there that don't have that. There's another, um, ordinance note that we have that talks about the garbage disposal for your residents not, not being, um, a place for harboring rodents. And you have a huge dumpster wide open. Um, I've yet to see a dumpster of that size that at any point you don't see rats running around at some point. Um, even a child crawling into there could not get out. It's, it's, in my opinion, it's, it's a very dangerous place, um, to have wide open like that. I was not impressed with the upkeep of the mobile home at all, of the whole park.
Sir, I'm, I apologize. I should've let you go ahead and get your rebuttal in. I'm gonna let you do that now, if you have any rebuttal for comments that have been made.
Well, I'm, uh, I'm aware of the, um, the regulations relating to mobile home parks and, um, um, I just recently, um, was inspected by the parish. We've had, um, checklist of items that the parish required us to do to get in compliance and we've completed that checklist. I'm not sure if the current grandfathered mobile home parks are required. I don't think they're required to have skirting. Um, I know any expansion that I do would, would be regulated by the current mobile home regulations, so I would have to have fencing and, uh, spacing and skirting and all the, I mean, all the requirements of the, of the current ordinance. The dumpster has been a problem. Uh, it's the only place physically I've had it to put it. Um, I just recently acquired the three acre tract adjacent to, uh, to my park and, uh, part of our plan is to relocate that dumpster across the ditch further back and, um, try to put at, at least one more so that we can have smaller, uh, easier, uh, more accessible dumpsters. I, I've never seen a rat anywhere, anywhere near it. Um, I know the, um, the local residents, I don't think we've done anything to, uh, to bother, uh, anyone. We've tried very hard to, uh, be extremely selective about our tenants and, um, I think the, um, the appearance of the park is better and, uh, the clientele in the park is much improved. And I think, uh, given the opportunity, the, uh, mobile home park would be a, a nice asset for its residents and for the people in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Well, I, um, you know, what you have now is, is a non-conforming use. Um, I view it as a transitional use. Um, frankly, I, I don't, I don't think that the proposed use is, uh, is in keeping with the character of the area. Um, and it's certainly not in keeping with the growth patterns that the area is experiencing, uh, currently. Um, I can't support this and I'm gonna make a motion that we recommend, um, a denial, for those reasons.
I have a motion to deny by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Second by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. See, item six, public hearing to consider the following business park standard. Six A zoning review ID 1697.07 for U.S. Environmental.
My name's David Fazekas with Benchmark Group LLC and I have with me, uh, JB Easterly, the architect for the project. Uh, Mr. Dudley, who is the builder and the owner, was not able to make it tonight. He had a bad case of the gout and is incapacitated tonight, so, uh, please excuse his absence. I can answer any questions about the site, uh, and Mr. Easterly can answer any questions about the building. I think that we have met all the requirements, say, uh, the lighting layout, which Mr. Easterly has brought with him tonight. So, uh, if you have any questions that we can address, please.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Okay, I have to ask, why, why are we getting this now when we don't have time to look at? Was it, was it, was it a mis-
It has not been requested as of yet, ma'am. I, I was just told by Mr. Lance Bronck that that was one of the questions that the commission was going to ask in reference to the, the, the lighting on the building. And what I have there is just some, um, what we call wall pack metal halide, uh, lights, uh, attached to the exterior of the building.
Well, it, it's in the ordinance that the items that are required to come to us before the, for the meeting? So you weren't given a copy of that? And Lance didn't give you a copy?
I submitted the plans, I submitted the plans to the parish four or five weeks back and his comments were, uh, drainage, uh, Mr. Fazekas has taken care of that, uh, fire department, fire marshal, and that was it. Uh, in reference to the lighting specifically, that's part of the business park, uh, submittal and it was on the plans original. I don't know at what point y'all review this, ma'am.
Yeah. Ms. June, do you know, do you, do you know why, why don't they know what we need ahead of time so that we can have time to review it before we get up here? Do you, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Lance generally handles that part and I don't think anybody's ever asked for the lighting before, so I guess he's never made a big deal out of it.
Well, but last, last month Julio made a point. Another company came before the commission and brought a hand-drawn sketch and Julio said, "Well, where's this? Where's this? Where's this?" And I, I think if, if that's what's required, you know, we need to make sure they know that's what's required.
Can I answer your question? I don't believe the law is on the checklist right now.
It's in the business park right here. There's, um-
If I may, I think the, you know, the, it-
I can just-
Having sat on that side of the table many years, it's not staff's responsibility to educate the professionals. Sorry. It's their responsibility to read the ordinance. It's their professionals' responsibility to be aware of what's required. And, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna put a square on y'all's shoulder. You need to read the ordinance and be aware of what's required. And, um, you know, um-
I will, I'll go ahead and tell you this. From now on, if one comes in for a business site review, I'll go ahead and send them the list of all the procedures and everything that they need so they'll know what to send. They generally send a big roll-up thing and Lance don't submit it because it's a huge document with about five or six pages of it. So he takes out the two that he thought y'all needed and that's what he copies and sends to y'all.
Okay, so maybe you have other things and just didn't give them to us?
There may be more stuff that you just don't, he, they ju, they've never looked at it before, so he then never really thought to put it, I guess.
Well, I know we've done other, there was another building plan review on Swamp Road, the roofing company, which I keep going back to because they're doing such a good job. But, you know, we, we did get everything from them and so that's, that's my frame of reference. They brought everything.
And, and I think that June brings up a good point. What's happened is in different business parks, there's been a, a slightly more casual view of it where some that have been in, in closer proximity residential areas, it's, it's been closely watched. And Lance has in the past made a judgment as to what gets distributed or what doesn't get distributed and maybe wasn't the right thing to do. I, I support him. I think he, he's making his, his best to minimize copies and minimize the weight of the package we get, but unfortunately, it really is their responsibility to make sure everything gets submitted.
And it was, sir.
Okay. And, and I'm not denying, I'm just saying-
I understand, yes.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Can I ask a question? Is this the building in the business park? Is this one site in the building park or is it the whole business, the whole built, uh, business park that's being submitted?
It's a, one building in-
I think there's a discrepancy in the, in the ordinance because it talks about the site plan, so that's already been submitted previously. The, the lighting plan for the, for the, uh, I think we, they're talking about a site plan review and then you're talking about a building plan.
But this is a site plan, I think they're referring to-
Yeah.
-Mr. Pankton because one of the things that we're looking at is where the, where your truck access is gonna be.
Because the, part A talks about the plan of the business park itself. Part B talks about the plan of the buildings and I think there's a discrepancy in there.
Now, I don't know there's so much of discrepancy in one of the others. It seems to me like it's going ahead and actually specifying a bit more because, okay, you're looking at the site plan, which is just this particular lot. Okay, so there's certain things that we should be looking for as, or checking for as far as this particular lot. Then it goes into a little more detail with part B pertaining to the building itself. So I, I, I mean, I don't see us looking at the whole business park, we're looking at just this specific site on the, of the business park.
It, I find it confusing, that's why I was just sitting here looking at, one's talking about a site and one's talking about a building.
If, if I can add to the confusion? The, uh, it, this was a confusing situation for us too because the business park was never completed. If you look at the site plan, they show a side street there, that's never been built. So part of the complication with the site work was, uh, the, it, the side street calls for subsurface drainage. It's never been installed because the street's never been built. And, uh, you know, we felt like we were taking on some of the responsibilities that the developer should have taken on. And, you know, I know you've run into these before where you, where you have a subdivision that's not completed. And, uh, so some of the lightings that would've been installed with the subdivision all were never installed and, and the builder didn't feel like it was his responsibility to do what the developer should've done and never did, you know? So it made the, made the site a little bit more complicated. And, uh, you know, we, we had gone back and forth with CSRS on what was our responsibility and, and what was the developer's responsibility and, you know, we tried to address all the comments that we were given.
How big is this building?
Pardon?
How big?
I'm sorry? How big is it? About 9,000 square feet. 82 by 110. And it's got an office complex in the, in the front. Uh, it's basically for, uh, U.S. Environmental. It, what it is, is the first responders, uh, you know, to plant accidents and highway spills and such.
Well, the only comment I have is you don't have enough street trees.
Sir?
You don't have enough str, enough trees.
Enough trees? Well, I'm sure we can handle that.
Do you know where you're going to locate your trash, your dumpsters? I don't see that on here, that's one thing I'm-
No, ma'am, I do not.
Okay.
I haven't addressed that.
And then your, um, your circulation, you've got big doors on both sides.
Yes, ma'am.
So are you just loading and unloading from the sides and that-
Well, this is for emergency vehicles so they have quick access and exit. So we have big doors on both sides of the building so that they can have a through flow.
Okay, so you, the build, the vehicles are gonna be inside the building?
For the most part, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. The front 30 feet, two-story is office complex. Behind that is just strictly metal, uh, storage or warehouse facility.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Yep. If there are no other questions, then I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments, questions from commissioners?
I like, um, I think you need to, you need to make sure that your dumpster is behind the paved parking area. Okay? And I don't think you have enough trees. Um, you can certainly plant another tree between the two that you have shown. You can plant a couple of them along Highway 73 and one on the other side of Highway 73. You can have my sketch.
May I, yeah, may I, may I come look?
And, um, I'm of approval with the condition that you, uh, add the four additional trees and make sure the dumpster is, uh, behind the paved area. You can have that.
Yes, sir.
I have a motion to approve with condition by Julio Dumas.
A second.
Second by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
See, item seven, public hearing to consider a definition. Seven A, single family. Mr. Chairman?
Now, this was the definition you were looking at. Somehow, and this, this is my fault, uh, I did not forward, uh, Mr. Loam the latest version that we had worked on.
But that is the latest version. That's the one that I did.
Kind of a way of background to this issue on the agenda. This came up at the zoning subcommittee and it was recognized that there is no definition for a single family resident- for a single-family residence in the parish. So this intent is to fill that gap.
This is the definition of a residence or who may live in a single-family dwelling?
It's the definition. Take that for what it's worth. It does go...
It's a single-family residence?
Don't we define in the code what a single-family dwelling is?
What a, what a single-family residence is. Because that's what we speak, that's what the, that's what all the rest of our rules and regulations refer to, I think, a single-family residence. This is the, this particular version is the version that, that Neil Parenton prepared. The other day when we talked in the subcommittee meeting, I think the only thing we had come up that really made, that we had discussed was perhaps including the word indoor around the culinary facilities because in some places, it's part of the country, you know, you usually have a kitchen, sometimes you have one in the garage too.
Everybody likes to cook outside, some of them.
That's right.
I think there was some discussion about a bunkhouse problem and so I have requested assumption parish to provide me their bunkhouse ordinances so we can also look at that.
But before we went to that point, we needed to do something with a definition first.
So what you're saying is they couldn't, there cannot be two culinary areas because a lot of people are putting outdoor kitchens in?
No, you can't. Part of the definition would be...
One indoor, one outdoor.
The only suggestion beyond what you have in front of you, which we had discussed the other night, was possibly including the word indoor. On your version on line three, I would put indoor between single and culinary. So it's a single indoor culinary facility. And then I would do the same thing on line five where it speaks to it again, a single indoor culinary facility.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw a curveball at you. I have a home. I have a kitchen. I have a large enclosed back deck. It has a fireplace. It has television. It also has a kitchen. Is that indoors or outdoors?
We could get to the, from a definitions standpoint, we could get so specific about what, the question is where do we draw the line at? I mean, we could say that it could be the single indoor culinary facility inside the main residence. Uh, you know, my interpretation is you've got a main kitchen inside the house and then you've got, would you consider that part of the original house? Would you consider your out, your, your back, your enclosed deck part of the original house?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I, I'm, the house I'm describing, the kitchen in that enclosed deck is a lot nicer than the kitchen inside the house.
Well, I mean, that's true also. You know, I know plenty of people have a big nice kitchen and then out in the garage have another big nice or an outbuilding have another big kitchen. And we didn't want to specify, you know, the issue is you don't want someone to have a, two kitchens. If you've got two kitchens running the same residence, then the assumption has been in other places that you've got a multifamily dwelling going on probably.
Well, and, and I guess that's where I'm getting at. I'm wondering if we're not best by defining a single-family dwelling, i.e. a base structure that fits in one parcel of land, meets a setbacks, has one kitchen versus residence, which is defining who may live in that, in that, in that unit. Would not be better by separating the structure that can fit in a single fam, that can be permitted in a single-family lot versus the regulation of who may live in that unit.
But Julio, what brought this about was someone who came to the, to the office and was concerned with who was living in the homes, not the homes themselves. That is what he's trying to address, is who can, who are you considering in this single family?
Okay.
It's the stuff like migrant workers and, uh, stuff like that.
And, and my, and my point is that I think both need to find, I was looking in the code for definition of a single-family structure and what, there wasn't there either.
They don't have one.
And I think, I think both need to, need to be generated.
We could do that. And it wouldn't necessarily be worded the same either. Probably not.
Right. I mean, that's why I, I'm not inclined to put the word interior here. Because, you know, I view this definition as, as simply defining who's living in a, in a, in a dwelling unit. But, but I think we still also need to define what a, what a single-family home is.
Well, that was a guess. What we do is forget about the interior or indoor and proceed with the definition of the residence, single-family residence, and then we can come back with a separate definition of what constitutes a single-family dwelling, which should be, which will actually have to spell out a number of things that are included in that. And that's, but that will be a little bit tricky. Because there are a number of things, depending on your single-family home and your income that you may have in there that a standard one would not have.
Yeah, but there's lots of definitions out there in various codes that we can, we can pick from to define a, a structure.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Since this item is up for public hearing, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary and he'll get you three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to all. My name is Harold McGee. I'm a resident of Ascension Parish. I reside on Rue Village in Prairieville and I'm president of Merrell Properties. And what Merrell Properties does is develop single-family residential homes in single-family communities for lease. We have a, a growing problem here at our parish in that we currently do not have a definition for a single-family residential in the code. This problem has been more, become more acute with the influx of transient labor into the Many of our neighboring parishes have been redefining their definition of single-family residential and passing quote-unquote bunkhouse ordinances as well. Most lessors, many lessors, in their leases require leases to adhere to all parish, state, federal laws, and community restrictive covenants. It's been difficult for lessors and community homeowner associations to enforce and evict single-family residential violations in the absence of a definition of single-family Any, it is, it is important that in any definition of single-family residential, that an affidavit be required by the violating occupant attesting to the number of unrelated occupants. It's virtually impossible for lessors or community homeowner associations to determine and identify disinformation when the men, when some of the occupants may be undocumented, may be of undocumented foreign origin. Our parish, to the best of my knowledge, is one of the few in South Louisiana with the exception that does not define single-family residential. Copies of our single-family residential zoning definition were provided to the strategic planning committee.
Thirty seconds, sir.
And I would request that this body expedite their recommendations to the council for their consideration as this is an acute growing pa, problem within our parish. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Comments or questions from commissioners?
I've got a question. I did a lot of work with the hurricane evacuees after the hurricanes and there were a lot of them living together, so how would this affect them?
During a state of emergency situation, um, Ron, you can...
Once, once an emergency is declared by the governor and, and there's federal intervention, basically you go into a, a whole different set of guidelines for whatever the period that emergency is, is, is set up for and that just basically wouldn't apply.
It's just wait for a certain amount of time?
It's wait for a period of time and I don't know if there's a specific time that it's said that, 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 that takes place for, but my own personal experience is six, seven months, depending on the amount, the amount of damage that was done.
Yeah. I, I know people that are still living together though.
Well, and that's, and of course it's, the situation from New Orleans is a different situation. Uh, that has not recovered very quickly. However, that's not the thrust of this particular deal, as I understand it. The thrust here in terms of bunk housing is not refugees, or storm refugees. This is a situation where we probably have, uh, workers from outside coming in to perform tasks who group together in bunkhouse situations. You know, they're here working and that's a cheap place for them to stay and they just congregate there. And that, and that generates a different kind of problem than evacuees. And that's, that's the basis of these type of ordinances, not, not folks that are on the run from a storm or displaced for a period of time. This is aimed primarily at my, uh, well, migrant worker would not be a good word for it, but, but those who are from the outside coming in to live and do a job for a period of time.
Well, notwithstanding that the thrust of this is different, the ordinance, the ordinances should not discriminate one from the other. I think the more important factor is that the people that are living as a guest in someone else's home still officially reside in their other home that is being renovated or restored or whatever. So they're really there as a guest on a temporary basis, albeit an extended temporary basis because of the unusual, big and extenuating circumstances that New Orleans suffered where, where these people would actually be residing there on a, on a allegedly permanent basis.
Of course, at this point, you know, we're talking about an ordinance that has not been drafted yet.
Yeah, we haven't even drafted an ordinance. We gotta have, we gotta have a public hearing on an ordinance before we, uh...
Well, but at the same time...
So this is, so, so really what we're doing tonight is really discussing the definition that we're gonna move forward into an ordinance, we'll hold a public hearing on an ordinance...
For next meeting, I'll propose.
Okay.
We can't take the next step until we've got a definition. And really, I'm sure it was an oversight when everything was drafted to begin with that we would have an entire zoning manual and the basis of it is single-family residential, but we don't have a, a definition of one. That's just oversight, I'm sure.
Well, and, as all, all the commissioners know, as much as we, the report that you got tonight, how much is single-family residential used with a report like this? I mean, we use the, the term loose, we have no definition.
Right.
I mean, we should, we should adopt, we should have some definition to, uh, to go with, some official definition.
But we don't have any definitions for any of the terms of those type of, of...
Well, and that, this is a good place to start. I mean, we're gonna, we, we're going to have to start defining some of these terms that we use, um, before, before it comes back and bites us.
And if all, and all the terms that everything is based off of, single-family residential is the first one you get to have.
So, O'Neill, do we need a motion for tonight or not?
Well, I need somebody to tell me what they want before I can draft an ordinance. And if, if we've gotta make a decision, I don't know, I mean, I can't.
I, I'll make a move that we move forward to a public hearing with a draft ordinance at the next meeting with this definition as it's written.
Okay.
What was the people count on this? The most I see is four. Is that correct?
Unrelated.
Four unrelated.
So as long as they're related by blood, it can be as many as occur?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If you're related by blood, you know, you can, you know how many you got.
Okay.
All right, just so I'm clear, because we're having a public hearing to consider a definition, are we actually going to make a motion to adopt this definition?
No.
Not an ordinance, just a definition?
We can't adopt it because it's gotta be part of the ordinance.
It's not, it's not an action item. We don't have an ordinance that puts it into the, tonight we're talking about it.
Okay, I just...
Next meeting, we will...
Present an ordinance.
All right.
Have an ordinance for public hearing.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear on that.
Right.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? Julio, did, okay, we need a motion for you to proceed, correct, O'Neill?
Yeah.
Do you have a motion on the floor?
Second.
You made the motion?
Second.
Well, you made a motion to proceed.
I made a motion for them to proceed with a, with a ordinance at the next zoning commission hearing with this definition as it's written.
Okay. And Steve Barrow seconded. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item eight, new business. Any items of new business you brought up before the commission? Item nine, old business. I have no items of old business. Item ten, subcommittee report. Mr. Kraus?
Yes, I had a lengthy sub-commission zoning meeting. First issue we just addressed. Also, we discussed, and I think there's a copy of the minutes in your handouts you can look through. We talked about imposing fees and I may defer to Mr. Marshawn if he wants to elaborate a little bit on the, the fees that were discussed. We feel that, that there's no fees assessed for PUDs, TNDs, and SPUDs and we think this may be another oversight. And we were asking Lance to go back and do some research and provide some information to us because we feel it's an opportunity that we're missing. And so that's going to be reported back to us. And then if we so desire, we can move that to the council. Anybody have any questions on that? Comments? All right. We also talked about, Mike had a real nice PowerPoint presentation, which I'm not going to share with you tonight. I think Julio's gotta get somewhere, so we, in the essence of time, we won't delve into that. But he's asking that the parish look at a process of workflow and I'm sure he'll be happy to share that PowerPoint with you. And it's a good approach and needs to be done. And that's something else we will take further steps to implement and discuss as we, as we move forward. Thirdly, we wanted to talk about hiring a planning and zoning consultant. Offer that there is a great, well, project look, being looked at at the Darrell area and I'll defer to our acting planning and zoning director once again to maybe elaborate on this. Some good discussion on maybe we need to hire a person to evaluate land use and make some recommendations to it. Ron?
We discussed, we discussed, uh, at length, you know, what constitutes a good master plan, some options that are out there. There are a number of professional outside consultants who do this on a regular basis. And this is a whole different process than probably what you've gone through before with, when we do our planning and zoning here. At our next committee meet, subcommittee meeting, we'd like to talk, I've asked for and received a little bit of stuff, I expect to get more later this week or early next week, about what other communities have done, work up a, a scope of work for what we want to see done, and have some preliminary numbers on what I think we need to ask for in terms of money and then seek, uh, profess, solicit professional proposals. We need... We need to talk about at least one more meeting, get a better idea, let everybody understand where I'm coming from in terms of the money and timeframe and this type of thing. But hopefully have somebody on board sometime this summer through a selection process where we... When these guys actually come in and make presentations of what they've done before in other places. I think it's a very exciting thing, and it's the type of thing where we can actually get it on the ground floor in an area before a lot of development takes place. I think you're commended... To be commended for thinking about that and trying to not react, but be proactive and get a place ready that doesn't just respond to whatever individual developers come in and want to do. Makes for a much better planned community. I think I also spoke briefly about some other things that were on the horizon very quickly that don't have anything to do with this, but you'll get a drainage ordinance, or the council, I will assume, will either adopt or send back to you a drainage ordinance very quickly. There is a landscaping ordinance that goes back in front of strategic planning at their next meeting that I expect will end up back here. And then a subdivision rules ordinance that, particularly in terms of construction, probably within a month, through revising it. So you're going to have quite a bit here all at one time. It's been pending out there, I guess, several months. About taking place quickly. In terms of workflow, just for an update, we talked about that again today, and we're making a pretty concerted effort to roll out workflow, at least in the permitting department, getting all the bugs lined out of it sometime early next month, and later in the rest of the planning department later in that month, probably, before we start DPWs.
Sounds good.
Now, I won't say there won't be kinks. You know, I'm sure we'll find some kinks.
Is a consultant provided for in a budget?
There is not a budget at this point. We will have to ask the council for the money. However, I think by statute...
Louisiana revised statute does allow for the planning commission... Well, she said, "Planning and zoning commission" to hire professional help.
They've got to be budgeted. You've got to walk it through the parish.
Well, you've got... Yes, you do. Well, we have to go begging the council for the money, but we can hire... I mean, that's the process we went through when we hired an ERA.
You know, and it may be a situation where from a money standpoint, I mean, we know we've got a jail project going on. We've got on the horizon extremely expensive central new sewer system, sewer plant. So there may be some money juggling that takes place, and maybe all we get done this year is selecting somebody and some preliminary numbers, coming out some preliminary work. But a master plan is a, you know, it's a year, year and a half long process, the ones I've been through. Takes a while to do it.
How would that affect any developments in the process now?
Got some ideas about that, too, and we'll talk about them at a later date.
Okay.
Sewer system has something to do with that, too. If there's an area... You can't hardly... It's very hard to stop development. However, if you cannot provide water or sewer services or some of the basic things that are required for an area to develop, you can slow things down. There's some mechanisms to do that. And while it's going through the planning process, I'll defer to our legal people at the appropriate time. There's some things you can do to slow things down.
Well, then, that'll be a future conversation.
Let's cover one step at a time and get... There's lots of work to be done before we really...
That's it. Okay, so, but we should have a little better idea with the... I know we'll be looking at an ordinance from O'Neil for our next meeting as far as workflow and these other issues. We should have a... Be a little further along by the next meeting.
I don't know if the workflow thing is an ordinance deal or not. That's kind of an internal policy.
Yeah, that's an internal policy. I mean, just as far as an update of how it's...
No, we'll have an update, and we may... And we'll have sketches and show you how this is supposed to be working, and, you know, maybe for a lucky part of it will already be implemented and running.
Okay.
We'll learn as we go on that deal.
Okay. And a couple of other things. We did not talk about any more zoning issues, and we did not cover the sign ordinance, but Mike wanted to emphasize a sign ordinance. Keep that fresh on your mind, and I think everybody should be aware of what's going on in Baton Rouge-Lac-Ed, and I think there was even something in today's paper about the signs out at Cabela's. So it's a hot button that's being discussed a lot, which we'll get into, too.
We definitely think that's an issue that we do need to... We do need to discuss. We do need to take some action on that as well. So we'll be looking...
I would say this. It looks to be like your place is going to be pretty full the next two or three months in terms of some pretty heavy-duty documentation to dig through.
So Julio, don't miss the next meeting. That's your one and only chance.
Okay, is that all for your report?
That's all.
Okay. Item 11, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Paige Becknell to adjourn, seconded by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. We are adjourned.
I'm going to get some sleep.